That's not from the city, so just and some opinions, FYI. Yeah.
Thank you guys for joining. I'm Perissa. I'm a resident over at The Lanterns. The city had reached out to me pretty late last week regarding wanting to meet with all of us in regards to the cemetery, which has been a very hot debate over here in Irvine for, I'd say, like, the last half decade. So with that said, I appreciate all of you guys coming out. The city wanted to hear what you guys have to say in regards to it because we are going to be the most impacted compared to anyone else in Irvine. The paperwork that you guys just received from two women are not from us and they are not from the city of Irvine. They are actually from another political team who were the ones responsible for Measure B and the Strawberry Fields not happening, which is why we are now here today. So take the information how you guys want, but I just want to let you guys know that that is not authorized from us. That is who it is from. I will take that. I mean, take it how you guys want. Information is key. I think everyone should know everything. You know, don't listen to just us. Make your own educated decision based on this. We definitely don't want to keep our veterans as pawns anymore and we don't want our community to be coming upon as well. With that said, I will take it to Jennifer.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jennifer Aswad. I am the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation. I am Mayor Christina Sche's Commissioner. I was a resident of the Great Park in Beacon Park and I just moved to Alter, which is right across the street, across the street from the ARDA site. We are here tonight just simply because we want the residents to have all the information. We want you guys to voice your opinions. We're going to have plenty of time for you to ask questions and ask directly to our mayor and our mayor pro tem. We want you to tell them what you want. They want to know the will of the people. And we want everyone to have a clear understanding that we, of course, want to support our veterans. We want this to happen, but we want it to happen on your terms. So again, thank you so much for coming in. And as Perissa already stated, the paperwork that you have in your hand was not provided to you by the city, nor by myself or by Perissa. If you have any questions, please feel free to email us or talk to us after the meeting if we don't get a chance to get to you, okay? And now I'm going to let the mayor talk. Thank you so much.
Good evening. It's such a pleasure for me to be here and I'm so appreciative of both of you asking us to come to this event. We did have directional signs supposedly going to be going in, but someone was not able to do that, so we're hoping we have a good turnout. But it is important to know that our staff has spent quite a bit of time putting together a presentation for you this evening. And we're so pleased that you took the time out of your busy schedule to come and to hear the pros and cons of, and I'm sure you know, there's two sites, the ARDA site and the golf course site, which is, golf course site is in the Great Park. Tuesday night on the 23rd, we will have a full hearing on both sites and the city council will then take it and make a decision to move forward on one or the other. Many of you know that originally we had discussed having the ARDA site as a placeholder for the city for veteran cemetery. It has never been through CEQA, which is environmental review. It never went through any city processes. It was more of a set aside site. Then when we realized the cost was so high, we decided to look at another alternative and that was the Strawberry Field site. And we thought it was a really good concept because we could build it very inexpensively. It was a great location. There was no trade off to the developer, all this idea that developers, these horrible developers come into town. Actually, they've been very supportive of our city in many ways, as the Irvine company has. That's why our city is so beautiful. But then there was this Measure B came out saying that, you know, that this is going to be a huge developer giveaway. Well, it wasn't because the site at the Strawberry Field site was 812,000 square feet of potential development. The site at the ARDA has zoning for 812,000 square feet of development, the same zoning. It would have just been a switch. But of course, there was just all this brush up and a lot of, I believe, misinformation. So that wonderful site, now we can't do it because the swap was overturned by voters and we accept that and we've taken that off the table. So consequently, we tried to look and I specifically tried to look for what can we do now? Everybody was talking about being in the Great Park. So I looked at our map. I saw our golf course site and I thought, well, this is in the Great Park. This is a perfect compromise. But again, now we have pushback. You see people passing out flyers outside that are really, you just want to be disruptive and they have that right. But we really want to move forward and find a site. So I've asked my staff to put together an overhead for Tuesday night and for tonight for especially the residents that live around these two sites. It's very important for us to understand where you are, what your thoughts are because of so much misinformation, misinformation on next door and community news and views. I don't think the community is getting a fair and objective view of really what's being proposed. So I thought if our professional staff came, you can ask questions, you can see what we've put together. We really want to present to you a very unbiased and direct and factual proposal that would be before us on Tuesday night for the ARDA and also for the golf course site. So again, I'm very pleased to be here. I'm very accessible. If you ever need me and call me at City Hall, I love to meet with residents. I know we've been meeting with our Rancho community. We did last week. We had another town hall. A couple of our representatives are back here and they have real problems with the proposal for rezoning. And we listened to them and we believe that we're able to move forward and try to help them and also help the owner of the property that wanted to change out that development to housing. So I think we've come to a good compromise and we'll have that on our agenda April, I'm sorry, August 13th. And just from my perspective, I want you to know, whatever happens, moving forward with the ARDA with already the development intensity on it, I am not in support of adding any more houses on the ARDA site. That is not where I would be at. And when we start, hopefully, if it doesn't go forward on Tuesday night, I want to have town hall meetings with everyone up here to start talking about a vision for that property if in fact that property does not move forward for cemetery. So with that, I don't want to overspeak. I want to turn this over to Anthony Quo, our mayor pro tem. And I'm very glad that he's here. I know almost all of our council members wanted to come, but it's the Brown Act if everyone shows up, so we can't do that. It always has to be two. And so with that, nice to have you, Anthony. Good to see you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate how positive our mayor is, as always. Unfortunately, I did not come here with a positive attitude. This is a very frustrating situation that we have before us. We were chatting earlier. My history with this issue goes back pretty far, but one of the moments that stands out to me was in October of 2014. And I was at a wedding in Galveston, Texas and I got a call. And the person said, "You're against veterans." And I said, "Why do you think that?" They said, "Because you're against the veteran cemetery." And I said, "Why do you think that?" And the person, I wish I could say they looked me in the eye, but we were on the phone, said, "Because you're Chinese and because the Chinese oppose the cemetery." And I said, "I have never said that. I don't subscribe to that." And no offense to our immigrant community, I don't subscribe to Feng Shui. I don't, that's not something that my family does. And we fast forward to today and I'm going to read you part of an email. "Hi, Anthony. We've spoken live and corresponded periodically. I don't like how you have been putting the interests of Big Developer Five Point ahead of the citizens of Irvine. Please do the right thing here and vote for the transfer of ARDA site to the state to facilitate building of the veteran cemetery in the Great Park." Let me pause. Mr. Cook, is the ARDA in the Great Park?
No.
No. Has it ever been in the Great Park?
No.
So documents like you have in your hand, documents like others that you might be reading online, just because you print it on paper and just because you put it in the internet doesn't make it true. And just because you send me an angry email doesn't make it true. In the Great Park where it has always belonged, or don't confine it to the little triangle near the spectrum to please Five Point. I realize he spends a lot of money to get you reelected. I said this before at City Hall and I'll say it here. I just got elected in November. You're stuck with me for three and a half years, so I'm not in the mood to go out there and get votes because I think if I got your vote today, you'd probably forget about me in three years. So this is not a political thing. So the reason I say that I come here frustrated is because I want, and I'm very glad that the mayor asked our staff to be here, I want you to hear objective, professional facts. And at that point, we will move to Tuesday where the city council will hear objective personal, uh, objective, professional facts. Certainly, you're here and we appreciate that you're taking time away from your families and away from your hobbies to be here. I think most of us would rather be on the outside of the building in the pools. But we're going to take all of that feedback into account because we're your representatives. And I will say something that I've talked to Ford Richard about before. Whenever people in the community get frustrated with me, and they have a right to do that, I always say, "I appreciate your feedback. I'm doing my best as your part-time employee." Because as the city council, our monthly pay is, what is it now, $880, something like that? So if, if all of these developers are sending us big checks, certainly we've not seen it. I think that if you've worked with us, like our friends from Rancho have worked with us, you will see that we really are a very reasonable lot, we're a very rational group and we want to hear from you. Because just as you're taking your time, we're taking our time. We want to hear from you. We want to hear your feedback. We want to hear your feedback on what our staff will present tonight. And certainly, I think that we'll take questions and maybe have a little bit of dialogue later. But thank you for being here. Okay. Our friend, the mayor's appointee to the Finance Commission, the chairman of the Finance Commission is here, Jim Schute. Jim is our neighbor from Northwood. He and his family have lived in Irvine a long, long time. I believe his wife is a deputy district attorney. So they have a long history. Their kids have grown up here. And so what you have is a city council and a group of commissioners like Jennifer and Jim who really, they're your neighbors. We have the best interests, we hope to have the best interests of our community here on our mind. So I think Jim wants to offer some thoughts. I know that their organization, their commissioners looked at the numbers of this project. Yeah. So.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Hi. Thanks for allowing me to take a little bit of time to speak. My name is Jim Schute. I'm the chairman of the Finance Commission. And what our commission does is review budgets, contracts, anything really to do with the finances and the monies of the city. I consider myself a steward, almost as a fiduciary, but not really fiduciary because we only make recommendations to the city council to approve items. We don't really have the authority to approve anything. But anyway, we took a look at the two proposed sites for the veteran cemetery. And I can tell you undoubtedly, the golf course site makes more financial sense to the city. And that's why we voted as our Finance Commission to recommend that the council move forward with the recommendation of the golf course site. And I can, I don't know if you want me to go into any numbers right now or no?
Just a few, but then the staff will have those overheads.
Okay. Yeah. Basically, there's more money available, we believe, to get the veteran cemetery, the veteran cemetery going with the first phase on the golf course site. We do not believe all those funds are available for the ARDA site. So basically for that and plus, as you'll find out, the estimates we have right now, the ARDA site costs approximately $32 million more than the golf course site. And some people may say, "Well, state government's going to pay for it," you know? And I'm not sure that's true. I'm not sure the money's there. I don't think it is. And even if it was, not only a taxpayer in Irvine, I'm also a taxpayer for the state of California. So why spend more money if we don't have to? I mean, that's always my, it just doesn't make any sense to me. So if there's anything else I can elaborate, that's about it. But I'm more than happy to answer any questions and we had a 400-page staff, city staff report given to our Finance Commission, which has great information. So if anybody really wants more information, wants to dive deep, let me know. I can send you the link to that. It's public record. You can go through and take a look and decide on yourselves if what you think's right. But I highly recommend the golf course site.
I'm sorry. So you guys picked that site because financially it was better for the city? Is that correct? No, it's a question.
The Finance Commission looked at it as a, as in a money thing. That is correct. Yes.
So we live here. Right now, ARDA is not inside Great Park, which mentioned a couple of times. We had a couple of people verifying it.
Okay.
Because it's the benefit of the city, we're putting it inside Great Park. Why do you think that should be of interest to us?
Okay, if I could, okay, so what I would, thank you. What I would like, so that's a very good question. That's what we want to hear from you. We want people to get up and speak and ask your questions. But I would like to have our staff do the overhead and explain some of the specifics about both sites. And then my plan is to have those that have signed up and want to speak, that I will have you come up here and then we'll start those question and answers if that's okay. Does that work? Okay, good. So now I want to bring up Bill Rodriguez. He's our planning director, staff, manager. And he's put together an overhead. It's kind of a shorter overhead than what we'll have on Tuesday night, but I think it'll be very helpful. So Bill, and then he'll stand up here and ask questions, answer questions as well. And then after that, if you want to get up and share any thoughts or ideas, we just want to hear even more information from you or whatever you'd like to share. Okay? Thank you. Hi, Bill. Thanks to have you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, mayor, for inviting me. And good evening, everybody. I'm happy to be here. As the mayor indicated, my name is Bill Rodriguez. I am a principal planner. The area responsibility I have is for Planning Area 51, Great Park Neighborhoods and the Orange County Great Park Development. So just to give you a little context here, I've got about 10 or 11 slides, probably take about 10 minutes or so to get through and then we'll open it up for comments and questions and answers. The two sites that we were talking about tonight, as you've already heard, are the ARDA, otherwise known as the ARDA, shown here on this map in yellow, as well as the golf course site, which is shown immediately south of the ARDA site in light blue. So over the last year or so, I've been pretty deeply involved in this project and have taken, become quite familiar with the area and have taken quite a bunch of time reviewing a number of documents that go back in time to when this first began, as well as reviewing some of the requirements from the Veterans Administration and some work that the state of California has also done on this issue. The slide here is for the ARDA site. It, as you're familiar with and has been already mentioned, is not within the Orange County Great Park. It is adjacent to it. It does share a common boundary with the Agua Shenan, which is shown in green to the right. It does touch Irvine Boulevard to the north. It is proximate to Portola High School and Cadence Park, which is located to the left. Alter is also to the north of the project site, just across Irvine Boulevard. So when we look at the site, the ARDA does have a couple of advantages. We've heard over time from the veteran community that their desire for a veteran cemetery would be on the former El Toro Marine Corps Air Station. And of course, this, the ARDA site is, it has a number of improvements that are already on that site. It was actively used as taxiways. There are hangars. There was former base housing. There are a number of buildings that are on that site. So it kind of checks that box in terms of being on the base and actively being in the heart of the base. As a result of that, as well as recent development occurring in the area, there is a lot of utilities that are nearby. So extending those into the site to facilitate development would be relatively easy. But what we found over the last year in looking at this is that there are some significant disadvantages and we bullet pointed them here. Some of them, we've already heard from Commissioner Schute in terms of the absolute cost estimate, which is right now stands at about $91 million. That is for the first phase of the development. That includes clearing the entirety of the site as well as developing the first 25 acres of the site. The site itself is 125 total acres. And so as you get into future phases, those costs will continue to accrue. The ARDA site, again, is directly across the street from development occurring in Cadence Park. There are roughly 1,100 homes going up in that neighborhood. And maybe even more importantly, it's directly across from the Cadence Park Elementary School. I raised that point because it's a little significant. The city had received a letter from Irvine Unified School District not too long ago in which they had expressed some concerns about some of the proximity of cemetery activities, the rifle volley, 21 gun salutes, and how that may be incompatible with their school operations. There is also concern with Cadence Road, which is shown in red, which does bisect a portion of the site and certainly is adjacent to the remainder of the site. There is a standard within the Veterans Administration in their guideline documents of how to design a veteran cemetery that tend to frown upon having roadways or the features actually bisect a cemetery. So because of, because of Cadence presence bisecting as well as connecting to the high school, you think of all the teenagers with their cars that would be taking cadence back and forth. Again, it'd be kind of frowned upon, kind of a negative in terms of the peacefulness to surround it that you might want to find in a veteran cemetery. So we do see that as a negative. As I'll show on the next slide or two, there, and it mentioned, there are a significant number of buildings on the site. There's quite a bit demolition activity that needs to occur. And there's also remediation that needs to take place of those existing structures on ARDA before it would be ready to be developed with a cemetery. The Veterans Administration grant requirements do require that the site be cleared and remediated fully before they would consider reimbursing with up to a $10 million grant for the development of a cemetery. And because of those buildings dating back to the 1940s, they would have to be evaluated to determine if they are or are not historic. The black diamonds that you see on this exhibit represent areas within or adjacent to the ARDA site that are designated for continuing FAA use. And so the site is not completely void of any other activity. You may have burial plots in and around other active portions of the site that would be utilized by other employees for other purposes to help with air traffic control operations. So looking a little more closely at the ARDA site, the left side shows the outline of the property. Again, you can see that there are a number of existing structures here and some Google Earth images on the left that do show what those structures do look like. Back in 2016, the state of California, through their Veterans Department, Calvet, had prepared a document that you may have heard of, it's referred to as the Owen Report. And in that document, they had identified or did an evaluation of the ARDA site and found that a number of the buildings, almost all of them by looking at this exhibit, have some degree of either lead-based paint or asbestos. And as you'll be aware, that needs to undergo some type of very specific and methodical remediation activities before these buildings can be taken down. So the idea that the ARDA site is immediately available, is immediately available for development is, appears to be a bit of a misnomer. There's some time, a time delay that's going to be involved while this demolition activity occurs. So now we're going to transition to the golf course site. Again, the golf course site, as you can see here, is located immediately south of the ARDA site in the heart of the Orange County Great Park. The ARDA site that we're looking at for cemetery is about 100 acres. It's a little bit smaller than the ARDA site, but we've had conversations with the Veterans Administration and they have informed us that a 100-acre site is adequate to meet the burial needs for veterans over the, approximately the next 100 years. By staff's analysis, the AR, or excuse me, the golf course site does have some pretty significant advantages as compared to the ARDA site. Number one being that it is distant from existing homes. The area to the right is an area that we refer to as District 5 North. It's an area that the Five Point has recently received approvals to start developing. There will be homes on the other side of the Agua Shenan. But again, right now, those homes are not in place. There will be a buffer that would be created by the Agua Shenan, as well as perhaps the way that the golf course cemetery site could be landscaped. Access into the golf course site would also occur down from the lower left-hand corner along Great Park Boulevard and or Skyhawk, which meet at that lower corner. Because of that location, it's actually, the access would go through more or less the Great Park itself and avoid residential neighborhoods. There are also no existing schools that are proximate to the golf course site, as there are in ARDA. The demolition and remediation activities on that site have also been substantially completed. The estimated cost to develop the golf course site is about $30 to $40 million less than ARDA, at roughly $59 million. The IUSD has not come out in opposition to it. And we have, as Commissioner Schute had mentioned, there are full funding opportunities that appear to be in place to help support the cost for that project. Couple of images for the, excuse me, for the golf course site. Images are a little bit tricky from this distance. They do look like the runways are still present. If you come up and take a closer look, you'll notice that they aren't. The asphalt concrete has been removed. Some of the earth has been turned up. Some of that earth has been stockpiled on the site. That demolition debris would need to be removed from the site, but for the most part, compared to ARDA, it is in a much better developable condition. So we talked about money. Again, the golf course and the ARDA site, both are eligible to receive funding from the state of California. State of California has allocated approximately $24.5 million total for development of a veteran cemetery here in Southern California, Orange County. As you'll see on this line here, we've identified, staff has identified that the, we believe the golf course is in a better position because of its advantages compared to the disadvantages of ARDA to receive a grant through the Veteran Cemetery Grant Program at the federal level. They have targeted approximately $10 million to help build the veteran cemetery, but because there were some elements of ARDA that are in conflict with their stated preferred design criteria, we believe that golf has the advantage in that regard in a moment. There's also been, the potential of a golf course is not built there. That money that would have been used to develop that golf course could be reallocated to help fund the development of a cemetery on the golf course site. And Five Point has also committed in writing to contribute $10 million towards the development of the golf course site cemetery as well. So the bottom line is that the golf course site, we have more funding available than the estimated cost of construction, but for the ARDA site, we are, we're still looking at the deficit. There's approximately $66 million that ARDA does not have available to cover its roughly $91 million development cost. So with the concluding slide, when we look at some of the critical features of the demolition activities, those have been completed for golf, but not for ARDA. Remediation, same, completed for golf, but not ARDA. We've identified opportunities to fully fund the Phase 1 development on the golf course site, again, does not exist for the ARDA site. The golf course site does not have any buildings. It does not propose any through roadways. So those things are non-issues, but they do, they do continue to be matters that have to be considered when we look at the ARDA site. And again, opposition coming from IUSD on the ARDA site does not exist for golf. So with that, I will.
Can I have you connection to the group that the ARDA site is owned by the That the Arda site is owned by the city. It's our property. It's not by Prince's property.
That's correct.
They just need to know that.
Absolutely. The ARDA site is property that the city owns. The city owns the golf course site, but Five Point does not own either of those two sites. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks. I'm happy to do my best to answer any questions. I don't know if I'll have all the answers for all the questions that are out there, but I'll give it my best shot. Or if people want to come up and make comments, I have to take those as well.
Also, so how come we don't have the full perspective of the strawberry sites as well on these numbers? If we want to make an informative decision, we need to have the numbers on all options.
Strawberry field is rejected by the program, so we can't go back.
So what's the question?
I got Michael's wrong.
Thank you. My question is, how come we don't have the numbers on the strawberry field? That was what I'm getting. Was proposed, right? For us to make an informative decision, we need to have all the facts. It's a big possibility, and I can speak to myself. It seems to me like the Arda is not suitable and the golf site is not suitable for this type of cemetery in residential area. As simple as it is, it's not right for residential area. Whoever making this decision, not taking into consideration the property value and the concerns of, as the Irvine Unified School District were worried about these children. There's also children living in these homes and other people. And the fact that you're gonna be having shooting and when there's saluting for cemetery and so forth, that is a big concern for us. And it will bring the property value to Irvine, really. And that, I don't believe this has been considered. So that's what I'm saying. The third alternative should start here, and we should go back and talk about it. Because that could be the best choice for you.
Do you want to ask that?
I was just gonna, my answer would actually echo what Mayor Protan Quell had mentioned, which is that as part of Measure B, when that was voted down back in June of two thousand and eighteen, that eliminated or took the strawberry field site off the table. And so now we're left with considering either the ARDA site, the golf course site.
Yeah, so this is our, can you hear me? Okay, so that was the problem. Well, we couldn't find the money to build the Arda site out. I sat down with our veterans. We spent almost a year. We found the strawberry field site. That was our plan. It was a fantastic plant, protected residence. It was a great location. It was perfect until Mr. Agren, who owns the community news and views, decided that, no, it was his idea to have the Arda. He just, you know, I really believe did a lot of damage, created a lot of misinformation to the public, and it was wrong. But it happened, and so we had the vote. People were scared that somehow we're gonna have excessive traffic and all kinds of outrageous things, which wasn't true. But this was a scare tactic, and people believed it, and they voted for that. The point is, I would love to still see that the strawberry field site. We had a dedication. It was fantastic. Everybody loved it, right? You've been there. Everybody's seen it right off the freeway. The problem is to go back now because we can't do the swap, which you just can't take property from someone who have to benefit them. You have to give them an equal, you know, right? It was to trade, to give them an equal value for their property there, for this property. We don't have the money now to go buy the strawberry field site, five hundred acres. And today, that value is like four hundred million dollars, and then still have money to develop it. That's the problem. That's why the strawberry field site won't work. And since voters overturned the idea of that exchange, we have no way to go, other than unless the developer gives us free four hundred million dollars of land, which I can't even imagine would be on anyone's radar. We wouldn't expect that. So that is what we're up against, and that's the problem.
So what we're saying now is we're locked in. We have to go with either side, right? So if I can hear that. Yeah, but the point is that I just, we just need to understand, I want to understand the context of choices available based on the referendum that didn't pass. So what's the binding commitment here? What do we have to deliver in terms of a veteran cemetery?
Well, I think there's been, since the, oh, I'm sorry. I think the understanding is that we've talked about this for five years. We have committed, not only the state, but our council and residents have committed to our veterans because this was their base. This is where they flew out of. They wanted veteran cemetery. We're just trying to find a spot that's less intrusive for residents, less intrusive for the schools. And we believe that the golf course site is the best site. Now, the one thing about the benefit with building the first base, which is like maybe twenty acres, we can build in the golf course site at the very lowest end, even on this side away from residential. And you have a hundred years to build that out. So what the federal government does is, once it's cleared and you start the first phase, that whole property can get developed into a trail system. You can't have animals or horses on it, but people can walk through it. And for the next hundred years, you're gonna have a lot of green, open space there. That's, that would be the benefit. And then over time, the more space is needed, then they'll start building it out. But it's gonna be a long, long term to get that even built to a certain green. And most of these cemeteries now are, I think they're developed very well. They're, you know, pleasing, but then you don't have all that, the gunshots going off on the Arda site, which I think is the dead, is it's not even something we should even consider. Because our kids today will be trained to listen to gunshots. And if we ever have shooting, well, I'm saying from the stand, I meant from the standpoint, if they had guns going off seven times a day, right?
They would be going, same thing on this side, too. I would be hearing from our home.
No, it would be much farther south. It would be down.
I'm sorry, how about the map from your, that's where the first phase would be built.
Let's clarify, this map, it's different.
Because we just drove and we printed this map from the side.
Okay.
So we didn't have access to it.
Right.
I had, I was not very sure where actually this is located. So we actually drove by it.
Right.
When I drove by it, I thought actually when it changes, goes to the golf side, that cadence wouldn't be as affected by it. It's not true. It actually still is across street by Cadence. And it goes all the way down, and we're all gonna be affected by it.
Bill, can you point this out?
Well, let's go based on this map. I'm telling you, it's not, I got it from your side.
So, okay, so Bill, would you explain this? Just, I just, I want clarification because that is confusing, so.
So I think that looks like a map that was-
Just the golf course, and across the street on Irvine Hills.
Yeah, I mean, you're saying not affected?
The back course side is like two hundred and twenty acres.
Right next to it, everywhere.
Correct.
Okay, then yes, but it's not.
So let me just, I'll put you, yeah.
What is the process to go beyond these two sites?
Well, I, there'd be nothing, Bill, here, that would know it's your base.
Let, maybe I can offer something that might help. So you're right, on that exhibit, it shows-
The golf course is being all of this area, right? So that area is one hundred and eighty-eight total acres, okay? Starting from here, going to here, do this.
The one hundred and eighty-eight acres, though, is more land than we need for a cemetery. So what we've done in proposing this golf course site is we've taken a subset of that. We're proposing one hundred acres. The hundred acres of the golf course, you see, proposed golf course site, the remaining golf course site. Proposed golf course site, the remainder of the golf course site. So this land could be developed with something else at some point in the future.
We're thinking like a nine-hole golf course or something smaller. It would be green and going there, so it would be another bucket.
So then this, we would just take one hundred acres of the golf, of the total one hundred and eighty-eight acres that have been previously allocated towards a golf course for the proposed golf, for the proposed cemetery site.
So I'm, so you're saying that the kids at the Irvine Unified School District have a problem with it? How are you gonna avoid this, the homes all around this, not to hear this gunshot? I'm just, I'm just curious, just, 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 just help me understand this. How are you guys going to shield it from a city perspective?
What I think might be advantageous, we have two or three of our veterans here that have been working on this project forever. So it might be good to have them come up and they can get into some more detail. What about Bill you want, or Bob, you want to get up and share a little bit more about the daily operations of a veteran cemetery? That, I think that would be helpful.
So would you please restate the question?
The question is, how are we supposed to prevent these, ourselves and our kids, from not hearing these gunshots by putting this into that golf area, which is still a residential area? I mean, and either the Arda or the golf course, both of them are a very bad choice for a cemetery for development. It should have been gotten somewhere much more bare.
Yes, yes.
And, and there were a number, there were a number of concerns that were expressed. The mayor, before she was the mayor, worked with us quite a bit. This site was proposed to us. We looked at it, thought it was spectacular as a cemetery site. We thought it was monumental, in fact.
Correct.
And for coming up the freeway, it would say, you're Irvine, and we honor veterans. And it was far away from, from everyone's home. We recognized when we initially talked about the Arda that it was gonna have a lot of problems. But it was selected at the time because of all the toro that is there. That was all that was left. Now, there's another section out here, this margin. Area up, up there is four hundred acres the FBI sits on. And they won't part with it. We ask them. I bugged Washington until they said, we're sending somebody out. Can, can you come out and talk to us? I said, okay.
There was another idea about the Anheim site, Anheim Hill, of the two forty-one and the, and the nine one, I mean.
Well, that's, okay. The gunshot sound. If you have been to a Veterans Day or Memorial Day event at Neil Barber Park, and you've heard the rifle fire, it's bang. That's what, that's what you hear. It's loud when you're close to it, but you will be quite a distance away.
That's not, that's in the mic.
That's not, that's not far away.
That's, that's the sound that you will hear. These are, these are rifles fired with blanks. And that is part of military honors. If, if the veteran's family requests military honors, that's what will happen. Now, in a veteran cemetery, the veteran and the veteran's spouse, and on some occasions, the veteran's dependent children, can be buried in the same site. And if you wanted to take a look at what this cemetery would look like architecturally, either visit Miramar National Cemetery down in San Diego. It's about an hour and twenty minutes down the road. Or look at it on the website, and you'll see the way the cemetery will be laid out. There are, these, these services take place in what's called commitment shelters. They're not scattered all over the place. They don't do it graveside. When, when you go into a veteran cemetery, the service is held at a commitment shelter. In most cases, it's cremated remains, so you're working with an urn. The flag is folded, and a detail stands off to the side, fires three volleys. They pick up the shells, present them to the, to the family. The flag is folded, and then the veteran is taken away and interred. But it happens generally from, I think in, in Miramar, there may be six sites. In Riverside, they designate, I believe, as many as seven different places in the cemetery where, where the commitment shelters are. So it will be at one place consistently. And this is, this is scheduled for a one-year build-out. So initially, there will only probably be one, so.
Because the people who want to sell their homes, they know that there is a cemetery located in this area, and the shots are gonna get more, and the area is gonna-
Well, the ideal solution was the one the voters of Irvine rejected.
Well, no, naturally, we were misled. We were misled into voting for that.
Yes, we were.
Yes, that's a bull's place.
So what's, is there a procedural recourse that we have for consideration outside of the Great Park at this point? Yeah.
It's in Anaheim, Anaheim Hills.
Oh, the Anaheim Hills, cemetery.
No, 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 I want to understand from a procedure standpoint. What is it? I mean, if there's some sort of a petition that you initiated, what is it that we can do from a procedure standpoint? Because right now, we're only being fed two options, right?
Yeah, we have two options.
Right, well, so that's the thing, we're being sold to options at this point. And I'd rather see if there's another option where we can, you know, reconsider either the first site, which the veterans seem to have appreciated, or something else that's better suited for it. Because again, this is a residential neighborhood.
We actually talked about doing a petition. And if we do a petition, it takes five people to start the petition. Then we need twelve thousand people to vote. We need to get twelve thousand signatures. So basically, there is a way, needs to be rezoning and take some work involved. But if we all here together, thinking and agreeing the same thing, we should do that, and we need to, it needs to be everybody's effort. If one or two people, we're not going anywhere.
I'd like to hear some ideas from-
Okay, I just want, I just want to insert comment. If I look like I'm sitting up here annoyed, it's because I thoroughly am. Because when we talk about the strawberry fields, and I'm sure Bill's annoyed, but Bill is much better at, at guarding the way his face looks, and I'm not, is the strawberry field was, it was great. We all, the reason we're frustrated is because we worked very hard to push that. And you were misled by people who were handing out the flyers. You were misled by people who are continuing to be on the internet. So to the point of Anaheim Hills, there is a process moving forward on Anaheim Hills. Are we going to be involved in that process? No. And I know some of you want to. But the reason that we're not involved in that process is because it's not our land. So I would not appreciate if the Anaheim City Council said, let's build Disneyland light there. Let's all start a petition. Let's take a vote. Let's do that. So that's why we're not as engaged in the Anaheim site, for those of you who are asking about that, because we're not gonna tell them what to do. Our county supervisor, the Anaheim City Council, others are exploring that as, as a potential option. What's before us now is in fact two sites. If you have a third site you want to suggest that's not strawberry fields?
Marine Point.
Where?
The one that was proposed as a homeless shelter. You own the land.
We do not own the land. At the county, it's land. The county owns the land.
So what other option?
We're, we're telling you, so the state has come to us and said, tell us, tell us what you want to do. And that's part of what we're doing now.
So what is the fight constraint now? I mean, they're, they're, obviously, they want to move forward.
August, August.
I think if, if we have not come to a time, the funding will fail, right? So.
No, the funding, as it stands, you have a state legislator from Fullerton, who's not even adjacent to this district, who has dictated, her original bill said, funding for a veteran cemetery in Orange County. She has worked with Mr. Agren to change the language of the bill to not say a veteran cemetery in Orange County, but to change the language of the bill to say, funding for a cemetery in Orange County at the location known as ARDA. And so we're trying to present an alternative.
Not only that, is she changed it to the Arda site in the Great Park.
Which is not-
Which is not in the Great Park. It's never been in the Great Park.
Based on that, that is misleading. Can we fight this one? Because that is right there, it's a misleading ballot that we had to vote by mistake. That is not a valid ballot anymore.
Right, well, let me, maybe I can share something. Okay, so what we're up against, and the reason this is so difficult, we made a promise to our veterans five, six, seven years ago that we're going to take the space, and part of that base design is to bring them a cemetery.
How big is the base?
Okay, it's four hundred and seventy, four, forty-seven hundred acres.
What is the rest of it?
It's all Great Park. It's all Great Park and homes. It's already developed.
So there's nothing outside this area?
No, there, we have a cultural terrace. It's all been pre-designed. We already have it. The only thing that we found was this property. But let me just share this. So we know that Larry Agren has been working with the state legislators. They've designated the Arda site now for this to be the next cemetery. So we've met, worked on this, and we said we have to find another site because I can't imagine that you as residents want the cemetery right next to your home on the Arda site. It's too expensive. It's too intrusive. It's next to two elementary schools, next to a high school. So we've been trying to find a solution. You don't know how hard we've been working. We couldn't get the strawberry site. That was killed by Larry Agren. So we have this on our council agenda. So we have this on our council agenda on Tuesday. And by voting for the golf course site, we stopped the funding going to the art site that I'm honestly telling you would be so much worse for this community. What we'll see, though, is Larry will run an initiative. He will try to overturn the golf course site. He will not be honest with the public, and he will force a vote to put it on the art site. And that's what his plan is.
What does he get out of that?
Why is he pushing us?
He's, well, I, you know, I don't want to, I've worked with them for 20 years and there's just, he has an issue with Five Points and he's trying to punish them or something. I don't know. I find it very upsetting. It's not conducive for good community relations. But this is what his plan is. And so from our perspective, we want to protect our residents in this community. So at least understanding if we have to pick a site, we're going to pick the golf course site. And if we do, you know, and you can overturn it. Okay? You will, but Larry will overturn it, and then you're going to get it on the art site. No, of course you will. Now, that's what Larry will do. No, it's already, no, it's already pre-planned. We already have commitments to museums. We already have commitments to our fire museum in the Cultural Terrace. I'm sorry. I just explained to you, we can't do that. We've already got pre-commitments to the Cultural Terrace. That's the design. I'm just telling you the facts, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so does anybody else have a question? Wait, you know what? I have a list of speakers. Why don't we do, if one has to speak in there, let me call up people that want to talk. Is that okay?
Okay, 20 years ago, I moved into Irvine. And Irvine is known to be a well-designed, a well-thought-out. Everything that they do, they plan. They just don't plop something in the middle. And from the design perspective, and if you put the cemetery right smack in the middle, it's not a well-thought-out, it's not a well-designed. That's the plan. I mean, it's not.
Well, we couldn't even have it planned, so I think we did it.
Okay, so, okay, so, look, if this is what we're going to do just because we have people that want to speak and I don't want to sign in, let's do that, and then we'll have more of an open discussion. But I want it to be fair, so everyone gets a chance to talk. I'm sorry, well, I can't...
I feel that big sticker or something to memorize what the people ever want here, you see? So...
We don't bury someone in statue.
Yeah, a big statue.
No, we don't, we're not going to have that. Okay, so let me invite, let me see. We have, um, yeah, some of this ready. I can't count.
Miss Pierre on Carmine?
Do you want to come up and... Was that you? Okay, yeah, good. Okay, so come up here, let's give you three minutes, so everybody has a chance. And then followed by...
Maria?
Maria?
Yes.
That's you? Okay, good. You could come up. You guys are just taking control here. And then Ash? We already, okay, so we'll take you two and then we'll go together. Okay?
So, um, thank you very much for your time. Um, both sites are horrible for the residents of the Great Park because you're basically telling us to choose whether we want to be heard here with our children in the schools or they want to be heard at home.
Right.
And this is not an option. Both of them are really bad. There is an often area like here, closer to the strawberry. You said you made commitments. To whom?
Well, their plans will work out for three or four years. No, no developer. This is city land. It's not the developer. No promise to the developer. We don't, we're not Larry Adrian.
Put it down. What is away from the home, the one in...
Okay, so the problem you have is we have a water park. Do you want that next to your home? We have a...
Yes, I want to go there.
Okay, you want us to move the water park up there?
Yes.
Okay, so, and what else do we have? We have the amphitheater. We have an amphitheater. We'll put that up there. And I think that's going to be awful loud near your home.
But...
And we talked about that. You want an amphitheater next to your home? But we're just not going to make a decision tonight. I think, this is not what we're doing. I want to hear your concerns. We're writing them down. But we can move the water park and the amphitheater up there. And if that's what you'd like next to your home every weekend and all that noise, then certainly I can understand that. But I don't think that's what most people want.
I don't want cemetery.
Okay, so what that's, we're here to listen to you, okay? I'm not saying...
What other options the city have, until now, it's not...
Okay, but you're not, okay, you want to finish speaking and then we have some...
That was the property to you. This is owned by the FBI. This is the government. One and they...
They won't, they won't. They won't, this is their property. They won't let us use it.
And the base ends here.
That's the base.
Right, okay, so down here is all owned by Five Points. It's private property. And they were willing to switch and move up to the art site and then take the, and put the cemetery down there. But we lost that. It was voted out. 60% of the voters in Irvine were told it was a bad idea and they voted against it.
Can we start a petition to overturn that?
Well, I guess you could, but...
Thank you.
I mean, if you want to do it, I behind you 100%, but... I think we were so frustrated that a lot of people didn't get out and vote. Right? They didn't get out and vote and protect us for that. So...
I mean, the same person that misled Irvine is writing those commentaries. And they can't meet one, and my name is like the first name on there. She didn't even know who she was talking about. So I always encourage people, call the city, ask the mayor, ask your city council members. They're more than happy. They're very accessible to talk to about things. If you have questions, shoot them an email. It's so simple, and you'll get an answer within 24 hours.
Mayor, I remember we talked to the guy directly when I purchased my home and we talked about the Strawberry Fields and about the petition. And I asked specifically, do I need to go start a county petition? You remember, we talked on the phone.
Okay, so I didn't think he would be successful, but he was. And I appreciate that. Okay, so who's next? You wanted to get a speak?
Yeah.
Or if you want, just have a microphone and you can get through your seat. Whatever, whatever is here.
Basically, I agree with Nasrin. I say no to ARDA. I also say definitely no to golf site. What I'm thinking is, if ARDA was bad, I think golf site is worse. And the reason for it is, as far as Misa is concerned, before, at least, I would hear it from you, conventions from everyone, we had ARDA, it was outside Great Park. Now, we actually will have a cemetery inside Great Park. I don't believe that's a better choice. I think it's the worst choice. But for me, again, I think we should do something to get it out of Great Park. No ARDA, no golf site. But within it too, I would probably take ARDA.
No! When I, when I got up earlier, I said that we're here to listen. We're here to build community. We're here to get your input. And I'm not trying to call you out specifically, but one of the comments you made was, we were talking about the cultural terrace, what we've made commitments. You know what you said when she said that? "With the developer." You said it that way. No, no, no. And then you said... So my point is, the lovely ladies outside, who, I'm using lovely in a very loose term, they want what's happening in this room now to happen. They want you to be mad at us. They want you to be mad at your neighbors. So I just want to reinforce, this is a community we're trying to work together. You're asking for us, for us for suggestions. We're trying to give them to you. You don't like them. Let's work together. Maybe there is a third alternative. So, but let's all be polite to each other. That's what I meant.
I said, I'm not about these, I want to speak these.
It's somebody else's turn.
What does it take right now for the city to help us to do the petition? Take this from down to the street?
So, yeah, I don't know if this is the timing to do it, but we're going to have to see.
Tomorrow, or whenever, you're going to call our city clerk. And she's going to walk you through this process. Her name's Molly. She's very helpful. Her number is 7949. Well, let's not all call. Why don't you come back to me? Because she's very nice, but if we have 40 people calling her, she won't be very nice to me about it. So we'll chat after. We'll get you her number, and then she'll walk you through the process.
So now, Michelle?
And I can't read your name. You're an stellar?
Yeah, yeah, excuse me.
Is that you? Okay, good.
Oh, I'm okay right now.
You don't want to speak?
Oh.
You're welcome to. Hi, we just, we're all in the same block. So we purchased our property specifically because we were told that they were building a golf course across the street. Now, a golf course will increase all of our values and add to the beauty of our neighborhood. And we believe that it should be built as promised. But when you have up here the remaining golf site, you mentioned maybe you would do a nine-hole golf course. But, you know, we have no guarantees of anything. We will be... Can you, can you show me where the entrance will be for this?
Yeah, can you, that's thanks.
Just so you know, it's zoned for a golf course, but there's multiple uses for that site. The zoning allowed for golf course, a cemetery, different things. We don't have to rezonate. So when you bought your house, just so you know, it was a multi-use. It wasn't just a golf course. All they said was golf course. That was Lennar, and it was a golf course. So I just want you to know it's zoned for multi-use, okay? Anyway, I think for everybody, it is a much better value to have. It's valuable for everyone if a golf course wanted to.
Do you want to just show where the entrance would be if we had a cemetery?
At the golf course site?
Yeah. It's not where you said where the golf course site is?
So the golf course cemetery access would be located right here.
And what is, what street is that?
This is the roundabout.
What street is that?
This is the roundabout at the intersection of Great Park Boulevard. Right, so it's the extension of Trujico coming in from the city into the park becomes Great Park Boulevard. You take that down past the baseball stadiums, baseball fields. Or you can come Marine Way and turn left on the Skyhawk and come up. Where that roundabout is, that would be the roadway that enters the golf course.
And how do we know that they wouldn't keep creeping over, you know, to the left? Yeah.
I'm sorry, what did I do?
Instead of having a 100 acres that's in the blue?
Yeah.
How do we know that it won't start encroaching over into the... The gray area?
Okay, so the gray area would be set because that's set for 100 acres. That's it. Once it's dedicated to the state and then the federal government, they only get a deed for 100 acres. And that other portion we're thinking about, if it goes forward, is to put a golf course there. So that would be city land dedicated to a golf course. It would be developed. So when we give the state the property, it's deeded and the perimeter is set and they can't encroach, they can't go into it any further. It's just like your own property. You're deeded your property.
I just think it's a mistake not to have any part of that as golf course because people prefer that.
Well, right, so I think that's what our plan was, is to make sure that all the rest of that property would still be remaining a golf course. So it's all green. Everything will be open and green. Okay, so next person who wanted to speak, oh, Catherine, are you Catherine Clark?
No, that's me.
Oh, it's your turn to speak.
Okay.
I know you're fresh. I can see your face, so I knew you wanted to talk.
First of all, I just want to thank you gentlemen who are the veterans for your service. And to your service to your fellow veterans. And I, my question is, we're all concerned about the rifle volleys. What, what's the average? I mean, how many, how many burials are we talking per day? Is this 10 per day? Is the average one per day? Do you have any kind of, you know, and I know it's a 100-year build-out, so I'm not asking for specifics. But are we talking, like, every day there's going to be a burial? Or is it a more random thing?
Cemetery operations go typically, the gates open at dawn and they close at dusk. And the actual burial operations take place only on weekdays. So you won't hear anything during the weekend. It's completely quiet. In fact, again, I would encourage maybe a visit to Miramar Cemetery or Riverside National Cemetery just so you can hear what's going on down there and see the architecture and see the way this is going to be. The cemetery sitting there next to the golf course is going to be something that you're going to be quite proud of in Irvine. It's going to really be beautiful. And it's quite impressive to see the rows of burials and the column burials and the row of flags and know that in the middle of MCA S El Toro, where thousands of Marines is the last place they stood alive on American soil, you're going to be honoring the memory of those guys and everybody that served. And I think that's really wonderful, and I thank Irvine for that.
Thank you very much for saying that. I appreciate it because there's so many people in Irvine who are supporting our veterans and trying to look for a location for their cemetery. Okay, so the next one is, what, being Hugh? Oh, is that you? Oh, hi. Welcome.
And I think both sites are not good for Irvine residents. And I, I heard that OC, Orange County, recommended the third alternative in Anaheim here. So I think if we can petition for that, we can sign for.
Yes, we don't oversee that. There is a major problem. The roadway, the access, the gas lines, water lines are almost impossible to navigate. It's going to be hugely expensive. And there's no ingress or egress from that site. It's up on the edge of the road. It doesn't mean it couldn't happen, but I'm being told it's going to be nearly impossible to get that constructed. But it doesn't mean it can't. It's just got a lot of impediments. So, and I, but I appreciate your comments. So Kathleen Pickett?
That was me, but can you just tell...
Oh, Sandy, oh, hi Kathleen.
Can you just tell where the first phase would be if there's anything about there?
And we could, yeah, so we could work with the state, the federal government. So we're thinking probably in the lower end, either here or there. Now, we have the Agua Shenan, which is really wide and it's an animal terrain area that they would, they travel down. So it really would separate from these homes there. So we would consider it somehow down here in the lower end, the closest to the access, all the way from the homes. And then this would be the golf course site. So, and then again, the first phase, it's at least 25, 30 years before you even go to another phase. And they're small. They're 20, 25 acres. Right? Okay, so that's, does that help? Okay. Okay, whoever can I have? Yes, what's your name?
Sorry.
Did you fill this out?
No, I didn't, but I just have a question.
Okay, so how can you give that one, finding the next speaker?
Could you just point where the, maybe it'll help to where the Five Point Amphitheater is in terms of noise?
Okay, so, yeah, so that's down, let's see. We have it right, you know where the train station is? Am I right, Bill? Where are you saving?
Look, this is...
It's right down here. Oh, it's right there. Okay, yes, right here. Okay. There's, we believe that we are, we're talking about, and it's been in the plans, that they're going to move it up here, the permanent site.
Great, that would be awesome.
Wow, this is cool. Let's go.
Because I live in Quail Hill and everything...
Look, everything wild and noisy. You could have built all that stuff first, then we could have made that decision.
It's funny. So we can't do that. It's all phased in, you can't just do that. And we have to clean the property, the land. So it sounds easy to just build everything and get it worked out, but it's money and it's time and it's getting approvals.
What I'm saying is, people made significant investments here. You guys have been for five years talking about you want to build a veteran cemetery.
Right.
Yet, none of your documentation that I saw when I went to buy a home said this is where there's going to be a cemetery.
But all the documentation in the ARDA and in the golf course, the zoning, host a cemetery. There is a cemetery in both ARDA and that. It's in your documents, you have to check that out. So, but if the homeowner is not being more specific with you, then that's a problem. I mean, I sell real estate, we have to have...
That's a great park problem. We've all seen the Great Park happen and there is not mention one about having a cemetery anywhere in here. So I'm not saying, not you, it's not you.
Right, right. Because we haven't proposed it.
And you go to their sales, all like, you come here to this Great Park place. They don't mention anything on their little map.
But there hasn't been a proposal for a cemetery in the Great Park. And the ARDA site, though, they were saying it was in the Great Park. It never has been, that's city property. So actually, this proposal is something we've been working on the last year. So of course, the developer wouldn't have brought that up because it wasn't proposed until just recently. That's the issue. Okay, so if I could just, I have, okay, we have it, let's see. Neil Esperin?
He left.
Oh, he left. Okay, so let me go, just to finish this so we're fair. And then I'll go, okay, Bob Brower and then Brian Park. Are you ready? Come after Bob's going to speak. And then we'll just go to open comments, okay? Make sure we get everyone to be able to talk.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I've been involved with this project for five years along with Mr. Cook and have been working at the different locations. Certainly, I will start out by saying I would have preferred it down at Strawberry Fields. I was one of the first people to take a look at it and I thought it was a perfect location away from all of your homes. Unfortunately, there was a referendum. A lot of the signatures were falsely gained or misrepresented. There was election. If you lived in the area and you got ballot information, you probably saw a dozen or more of my pictures coming in the mail voting for, asking you to vote for the site down at Strawberry Fields. But unfortunately now, we're in a situation where that's off the table and there are two proposed locations in Irvine and one outside. I will say that based on my experience here, lived in the city for thirty-two years and seeing these referendums, if even if we were to, at the city council, meaning the city council designate, high probability there would be another referendum to overturn that and force it to the ARDA site. Mr. Agron is hell-bent on putting that piece of property or keeping it away from Five Points and getting them to do anything with it. And he will force the veteran cemetery or attempt to do it on that location. Unfortunately, we're here with a binary choice. We have an ARDA site or the golf course location or the third one, which is Anaheim. Mr. Cook and I have toured the Anaheim property. It's interesting, but it doesn't solve the Irvine problem. And even if we went to Anaheim, I'm having battle against Mr. Agron in referendums. Over the past years, I met the mayor nineteen-eighty when I had just moved here. She wasn't mayor then. We were helping to remove Mr. Agron from mayor at that point in time and we were successful. You will have a referendum again trying to force the cemetery onto the ARDA site. I swear by that. I'm a highly decorated Vietnam veteran and served with the Army over there. Had a six-man ran reconnaissance team for the time that I was there. And these days, I'm a hundred percent disabled veteran and I do a lot for the veterans community. And I understand the difficult choices you have here. My comment is really, the golf course is the better of the two solutions to try to move it away because even if you select a golf course, you're going to may have to band together and battle to keep it from being put on the ARDA site just because of the motivation of Mr. Agron and his dislike for Mr. Haddad and Five Point. I'm being very blunt. Those are my thoughts, keep them in mind.
Just let us know who you are.
Yeah. Hello. Hi. I've been following, since I moved in to Great Park recently, a few months ago, I've been following the legislature and our city meetings. I read the four-hundred-ten-page document that was sent to the committee, I think.
Good for you.
Yeah, there was a lot of information. And then my conclusion, ARDA was a terrible site for the veteran cemetery. It was a fact. And then golf course, sorry, this is suggested. But what I don't understand is, like, we'll have a permanent amphitheater right next to it. So we'll have a huge celebration next to Marine Family. I don't know if it's a good idea.
Concerts are nice.
Well, yeah, I don't know. If you're only going to use it at nighttime or is it daytime also usable? Yeah. Also, I watched the city council meeting, I think it was a couple of months ago. City manager had a trip to Washington DC to discuss with the Natural History Museum organization. And then he said that we are on hold positioning our museums because we don't, because natural history museums don't allow to be right next to cemeteries. That's what I heard.
It's not going to be next to a cemetery?
Well, if it's too close, they do not want the museum to be next to or close to the cemetery. But golf course is right in the middle of the, smack in the middle of the Great Park. And I don't know if it's going to jeopardize our plan for museums and it's even worse, troops.
Yeah, no, it's not. It's far enough away and we're going back to New York to talk to the National History Museum. And they're already at a point that they really want to create a relationship. And they've been out here, they've looked at all the sites, they've understood our plans. So they have not...
Because I clearly remember that she was saying that we are on hold because we don't, they do not want museum close to the cemetery.
No, I think you're just misunderstanding. It's on hold because we haven't, they just haven't developed the financial structure yet. That's what's on hold.
Yeah, if I find it, I will, yeah.
No, find it because I don't, yeah, that was never the understanding. That there, we're going back in September to New York to talk about, they're looking with the foundation to figure out it. But it's always been a financial issue. They've been out here, they've looked at our maps, they've understood potentials for different developments throughout the park. But they would be down here in that gray area, lower, right down there. And so it's not an issue for them. But I'd like to hear that because maybe it's just a miss, you know, Miss Holder or something.
Yeah, I heard that.
Okay, well, look it up and let us know.
Okay.
Okay, so now, yeah, so I think we've called everybody, have we not? So let's just go around the room and... Actually, oh, he's got it. And then the fellow behind you had a setup and then you're next.
Yeah, hello, hello, everyone. My name is Karthik. So, you know, I'm not going to talk about the Strawberry Fields or Anaheim Hills because, you know, I think the agenda of today's discussion is pretty much a binary choice. And before that, thank you all our veterans for your service. We really appreciate it. So with the binary choice that we have, I think we all need to understand that by not selecting the golf course and choosing the ARDA location, we'll be making a terrible mistake. And I'll explain why. When you think of a neighborhood, schools are a very important part of a neighborhood, extremely important. That Potola High School right there, it serves multiple neighborhoods. It serves, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Alter, Cadence Park, decent Park, I think even Goodbury, I mean, Goodbury, maybe more. Now imagine how concerned the parents would be if your kids are hearing those gunshot sounds. I don't know how intense they are. I don't know if it's going to make a difference. But as a parent, I would be concerned. And so would be all the parents that, you know, live in all those neighborhoods. So by choosing that ARDA site or even thinking about choosing that, it's going to be an economic catastrophe for Irvine. It's going to be a catastrophe. Those people are going to flee their homes because schools are such an important part of why they are here. I mean, Irvine Unified School District is already against it. You know it. Think about those parents, all those parents in all those neighborhoods. I'm not talking about like just one or two. So I think it's going to be an economic catastrophe if we choose the ARDA site. And that's what I think, you know, I don't know, the Sharden wants, you know, that site designated. And I think his agenda is that. He wants to cause disruption in the economy and the way they live, the way, you know, we call Irvine a home. I think that is the only agenda I can see because it's just common sense not to put a cemetery with gunshot sounds and all that next to a school. And I think that's a key point here. And of course, the financial, you know, aspects as well, as you explained. You know, it's going to cost so much that it's going to be a reject anyway. The BA is going to evaluate that and they don't have the budget for that anyways. So I think by making this binary choice and by choosing the golf course over the ARDA site, I think we all would have made a better decision than, even thinking about the ARDA site is what my opinion. And that's all I have to say. I'm not going to talk about any third option because that's off the table right now. I know we need a petition and I agree with that. So I don't want to repeat the same things that we've discussed. Anaheim Hills is, you know, not in control of the city of Irvine and we know that we need to do a petition. But with the golf course, it's still far away. You know, maybe it will be noisy for one neighborhood, I agree. But the Potola High School and, you know, I think that's a big thing. And I don't think a lot of people are thinking of those minds. But if all those people in those communities are not safe or they don't feel right to send their kids to that school, they're going to flee the community. And this is going to be a big catastrophe that I think nobody has ever imagined in the city of Irvine. I'm going to deface the community right now. I tell you, at least a thousand people there is really at this. But there is a third option. I'm not talking about the third option. I'm going to make myself clear. We've already discussed the third and the fourth option. I think the agenda for this meeting and, you know, we have had lovely, you know, facts presented, the one versus the other. And I think we'll be making a big mistake by, you know, keep thinking about like, you know, the third option, third option. But I think the point is the city council has to make a decision. You know, twenty-second July, when the city council meets, they have to make a decision, they have to give their facts. They're not going to talk about the Strawberry Field and they're not going to talk about anything on the agenda. They have limited time to talk on thirty-third. They're going to present the facts and I think they want to listen to our opinions. And I think the facts point to the golf course location. And I think it's just a more common sense decision to choose the golf course.
I'd like to see the golf course be built as a golf course. It sounds like you've said at the top of the show here that it was ready to go. I mean, it's going to be cheaper to build there. It's going to be cheaper to build a golf course and the golf course is going to make money. My question...
They lose money today. Problem is, they lose money today.
I guess it depends how it's run. I mean, not all golf courses lose money. I saw your report saying it was going to make about a million dollars a year or something.
Yeah, that, yeah, you're right.
And I know that's not a lot, but it offset some of the cost. My question is, what's going to become of the ARDA site if the cemetery is moved to the golf course site? What are we going to end up with then?
Because that's what I, okay, so what, I don't have the mic, but... That's something that we want to do once we approve that we can move forward on the golf course site on Tuesday night, is that we're going to have town hall meetings because like I said earlier, I don't want any additional housing. It's already, it hasn't zoning similar to the Strawberry Field site, which is kind of a multi-use. But we're thinking, but we want to get your input. What we want to do is look at a small commercial site. Kind of like, because I live in Quail Hill, we have our village center there. You know, like just a small little market. I think you could, I could do a small little commercial site. And then I was hoping, but it has to be discussed with the community to do something low-intense, but it still has to be something we can make some money on because we have to have that to be able to clean it up. Because this could be a sixty-million-dollar cleanup cost, cleaning up that, we don't even know what's under the ground. So, but this would be an outreach starting in January, town hall meetings to talk about, you know, have a scrap, talk about all kinds of different ideas that the community would like to have. I'm sorry, what? Well, that's what I was thinking, honestly, is that I was thinking we would just switch and put the golf course there and have a commercial center. I did bring that up with Mr. Haddad and he thought that was a good idea. So we could actually do that switch.
That would take a long time though.
Oh, no.
Except also, I'm just warning you, not play the bad. I think that's a great idea to put a shopping center there. But mark my words, when we go down that path, somebody whose name starts in Vegas is going to come and say, you're letting the big bad developer build the shopping center. So I'm just...
But it's just a small commercial center. It's not even this big as we care, right? But that's, it's seen as that. And that was my thinking, we do the cemetery and we do the golf course there. And even on this edge here, if we don't do a nine-hole, we could find another green development that would still be... That would develop this cemetery, we could find a way. Because you're not going to put a lot of, you know, industrial or houses or anything, it just wouldn't work. But we would sit down and figure out some, you know, useful... I can see like a horse, we call that. Like they have back east. A stable, I don't know, but that would be, we talked about that in the past. And then we could switch it to the golf course up there and then also put a small commercial center and sign it, really lovely. That was my original idea. And like I said, I talked to Mr. Haddad, he liked the idea.
Why is it the city's responsibility to clean the military site?
What military site are you talking about? Art is not the military's... Oh, the former military site, yeah, that's our property. We own it, the city owns it, it's our land. It's not Five Points Land, that's a bit confusion.
Just to answer that, the Navy is responsible for the... Bear.
Right.
Bears, you've seen it, there's buildings on there. And many of them are military era, so... So when we talk about cleanup, it's everything about break. They have to do the below ground, they have to do the...
Yeah, so if we find, you know, problems down there, they still have to come in and remediate it no matter for how long. Okay, so you're, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to reiterate something. I live, I can see ARDA from my house, from my balcony.
It's pretty, isn't it?
I did full well know that there was the discussion of the cemetery. I read through the hundred page. Here's the thing that I think everybody in the room, we're all here because we're concerned about property values, our children, our veterans, thank you for your service. We want to be mindful of all this. What I think is really important here What I think is really important here is, I think you guys keep hitting on something. There's a political element going on here that's a little above our heads here. Let's be realistic. What's going on between Five Points and Larry Agron? We have no control over that. We all have lives, we have children, we have a day job, we do things, right? I think the reality now is we have to figure out how to create a short-term exit from this situation and then fight the longer term. Now, I think if we can all kind of band together...
I think that was our point, is that we need to create and approve another site. Because if we don't do that, we are going to get the state coming in and that Arda site is going to be a cemetery. You have no choice, that's what's doing. So this was the diversion in a way tactic. I don't want to sound like I'm being too sinister, but that's the reason we've done this. And that's why we want to make sure we have something else to offer the community, not just you. Because you're going to have this go, if he does a referendum, it's going to go around the city. Everybody's going to be voting on this and we have to protect your interests. So if we approve the golf course site and we deny the Arda site, then if he wants to do a referendum, then I think it's a step at a time. Then the community can get out and say no to that. And then the community can get out and do a referendum if you choose to go back and try to find a way we can do it at the Strawberry Fields site. But the problem we have is that it has to be paid for. So we would have to have support in the community and it's just so far down the road to be able to buy that property. Otherwise, it's never going to happen. This is just the reality of what we're dealing with. So I know it's frustrating, but it's been very frustrating for us. Yes, okay, so...
My name is Mike and I want to thanks the two gentlemen, veteran in the corner there. I'm a veteran myself. Three, okay.
Oh, yeah.
I'm a veteran myself. So I lived in Irvine for 20 years. And, you know, this whole thing about the master plan and with the cemetery and with the political things above ahead, I think that's the key point that we've got to do now is, I do honor the veteran because I do want to get buried, close by my kids. But the reality is, it's not a well thought out plan to have the cemetery brought smack in the middle of the Great Park neighborhood. I am a Great Park neighborhood, you know, neighbor. So I do, I am concerned about, you know, the future of the neighborhood as well as I care about where I am going to get buried. To me, it's not a well thought out plan. And it seemed like, you know, it's just a toss-up. It's a political push from one party to another that we have above ahead. If we can find a way, maneuver, delay, there's only place that can be buried. So that's what we have to attack and that.
The land Arda. Yes, that's what it was.
The state's going to approve this in the next two months. So we're going to have, if they get a letter from us that we, we consider.
Okay, so it's been very strategic. I understand your frustration. But in two months, the governor will finally get all these amended bills and the Senate has put, I think it's the Senate, what is the, is it the, what is the name of the Senate committee? It's, yes, other way, it's the financial end of it.
Appropriation.
Appropriation, okay. So they put it like on suspense and they're waiting to see what we do in our mind. If we approve the Arda site, they're going to send us $25 million and they want it built. They're going to designate the Arda site as a veteran cemetery from the state. If we approve the golf course site, we will be sending a letter the next day and say that the city has approved the golf course site. And then the money will be appropriated toward that site. Which in honesty, and I think you said it best, we really have no choice. If we don't do something to create a diversion, we are going to get the Arda site. And if that's what you want, that's what you can have.
And also if it's approved and the $25 million comes to the golf course, we're going to take some territory and come back.
Okay, yeah, so that's a good question, we'll answer that. Okay, so what's this for you?
Thank you for hearing our concern. I have a financial question. Any study performed to show how much the property value depreciates per square feet? Because the magnitude of that catastrophe that you pointed out, I'm not, I don't have a law degree, but I'm pretty sure it's a good lawsuit potential as a city lawsuit. So if a lot of people, a lot of homeowners get together, they can make a...
It's a lot of communities that are affected.
It is. But I just wanted to know, what is the magnitude of that depreciation?
You're not a real estate praiser and...
You can't imagine how much it's going to be. It's going to be a deal you back because, you know, you're looking at five communities.
Give us some...
The answer is there is not going to be a study and I'm not a real estate prizing professional.
We have a study that's right here and she knows, she listens to the great podcast.
Give us some fictitious numbers.
No, it's going to affect us because it's got, the reason why I said inside the Great Park, just imagine you're buying a home here.
See, it's not about me anymore. It's about the schools are used by five communities. The Arda site has a school that's a five community.
I'm sorry. The question was, if in the Great Park, we have a cemetery, would that affect the value? And the answer is yes. So if you are a buyer, if you haven't bought your home today...
Shay that we can't regulate that. I think the thing that really affects values is overdevelopment. You have too many homes, that drops your value. I mean, that, that can, yes or no.
If they knew the cemetery was here, would they still buy their home today? Would you like that?
No way, no way.
Okay. Okay, and I appreciate that, but that's not, but that's not, okay, but that's not what is in front of us in the reality of what we're dealing with right now. That's what...
The reason I brought that question, because to give you that idea, when you go to the meeting in a couple of days from now, saying that people are thinking about this option.
But you're not giving us an idea. What you're telling us is you don't want either. So when we go back to the state legislature and we tell them either, they're going to force Arda on us. That is the fact. We have a colleague, Councilmember Fox, who's working with the legislature, who's working with Mr. Agron, who bring this back up. So if we take, which is, if that's what you want, that's all hope. If you want me to say no to either, Arda will be forced down your throat, period.
So this is not a good choice and we need to understand that.
See, that's what we're up against and I think we're getting, we're understanding. And it's not to create fear and anxiety, it's just our reality. And this is why we personally, I mean, like you said, we make 800 bucks a month, we're part-time. But we don't know how many months and how many hours we've spent trying to find a way, knowing what he's going to be doing. And it's sad. You hear these community views all the time, right? And they're out again and it's just nothing but negativity and misinformation. But Richard, if you were standing, so why don't you talk?
I think we're, is this on? So I think the real issue here is the how. So if you have two solutions, right, what's the how? And that's where you're at. So I'm an architect, a planner, a developer, I do these things all the time all over the world. You can very easily see a buffer between the blue site, the proposed that are in the cemetery and up there. That buffer is your key. That buffer is what's going to make everything work. And you do these things all the time. And Irvine is the master of fitting all these things together to make it work and flow. That is a gigantic site, the Arda site with the other side across, which is the, which is part of the remaining golf course site. How many acres is that approximately? 250?
You're talking about the Arda, it's 125, I think.
And then stuff across the street, so let's say it's 150. Well, there's a golf course right there. You can do a golf course and your retail center, it could be a mixed use thing. That can be really cool. There's a lot of things that are phenomenal buffer there. There's a solution here. My suggestion, because this is how I've gotten things approved in my career, you show the how and this conversation will really be solved. And you'll get, because nobody wants the Arda site. Again, it's terrible. I mean, we all want this, that's $400 million, not going to happen, sorry. So your two sites are there. So let's, I can focus on the how and see how that works for you. Because I think it's right, unless I could do a sketch, you'd love it, I would love it. So that's what I think you're next to do. That's my suggestion. I think you find a lot of support with that way.
Okay, so you want to speak and then...
Is there anyone who hasn't had?
He hasn't talked. And then Deborah and then Deborah. And then of you?
Sorry, I'm a repactor, sorry.
Given that this is a binary choice, and thank you for all the efforts, how confident are you that you know these people who are making these decisions? How confident are you that you can get the golf site approved?
Very confident. We have two people, one running for municipal, Melissa Fox, who actually I had a very good relationship with, but now she's running for state assembly. And she's completely flipped her positioning and now she's turning from a golf course site, which she worked with me on. This is almost two years ago, 2016, we've been working on this. And now she's working with Larry Agron because he's helping her run for state assembly. Politics is horrible, let's face it. So I only like to stay local. And it's created a big problem in our relationship. And now she's really pushing the Arda site. And that's sad because we really worked hard together to find another solution that would protect your direct, your homes directly right next door to you. So we had other speakers. Debbie, Deborah and then the gentleman in the back with the hat and then you right there with the glasses. Sorry.
First of all, I don't know how many of you, with all this energy in the room, did anybody actually vote for the Strawberry Fields in the last election? Because I got to tell you one thing. And for those who have been, who, you know, were reading the community news about Mayor Shay, who actually was Councilwoman Shay, her and I and Anthony were out there where Agron had his people fighting to let people know why Strawberry Fields was the best. We were bullied by Agron and everything, but we still fought. And you have Bill and Bill.
Oh, they sued us.
Yes, all these gentlemen out there, yes. And also thank you for your service. So, you know, now that we, I don't know what happened and why we lost the Strawberry Fields site. But now, because of that, we have to deal with what's in front of us. So I just want you all to remember that, is that these are the two things we have to deal with. And Mayor Shay, of course, did the best, the best action she could under the circumstances.
Yeah.
We talked about two things today, short-term problem and long-term problem. Priorly, obviously, the short-term one and we all agree with the solution for that. But I also want to focus on the long-term solution. And we are going to do petition. We shouldn't assume that everybody that's impacted and is the stakeholder of this can vote. Because a lot of value, and we all want our houses to go up, not down. And if immigrants go away and flee, and those are not the people who are going to vote. So have you considered people that are voting are not the right population for the, you know, people that are impacted by this? Because there's a lot of immigrants that don't even get to vote.
Yeah, exactly.
And they're not here. Majority of the people that are appreciating the value, they're not in the room right now.
Yeah, over there.
They, a lot of those, they don't talk English.
And I don't vote another country to vote there. That's, that's a fact.
So something needs to be done about that.
Right.
And I think part of the problem we had is when we had that vote, we didn't get enough support from this community here to help us fight this measure B. That was a problem.
Somebody assumed the referendum is fair and I don't think it is fair. The other thing is, I don't know who this Mr. Agron is, but it sounds like one versus million or whatever the population is. It's not the right contest, needs to be a fair contest. If there is vote, Missouri against somebody else, this population, theoretically, we all are on one side and he's one gender on the other side.
Yeah, the sad thing is, is that people believe stories. And they believe that a developer, use the word named developer, and then everybody's, oh, they're terrible, they're awful, they're horrible. And he's taught people in the city through his communication, his monthly, that our developers, Irvine companies, they're not perfect. And I don't always support the projects, but they've made this city successful. So the reason we're getting to Great Park though. So a developer isn't a bad, I mean, Five Points isn't a bad company. Irvine Company is, but he's turned people's minds to think this is an evil devil that's come to our city. That's what's sad.
Who these people are, because they are...
Residents in Irvine now.
No, but they can, they can depreciate their own home values. These are people who are not Great Park neighbors, perhaps somewhere in the North Park, other neighborhoods, who don't like Great Park anyway. So we need to pay attention to the population which is voting versus which is getting impacted. Now, the last point is, and you made a point about the civil laws, it's going to happen. We're going to make it happen.
Yeah.
Well, I think it is going to be a step at a time. I just want to curtail by our vote on Tuesday that we do not get approved Arda cemetery by the state. That's what we need to do and that's what we're going to have to do.
Yeah, I think that's our first goal, so that's, I think we should target that.
Right, okay. And then, I'm sorry, you, you have a microphone right up here? But I appreciate your comments, right here. This guy with glasses?
Hi, good evening. Thank you veterans for your... Service, thank you. And thank you guys for being here and for listening to us. I'm here to talk about the Arda location, which I don't think is a good idea. I pulled my daughter out of school. She was attending Red Hill, which I've been, she was at a private school. Red Hill is red, so I paid, you know, a lot of, well, it's a beautiful. I paid a lot, yeah, she was there for six years. And I decided to pull her out last summer because we just bought her home here a year ago. And I said, hey, I want her to go to Cadence, a new school. And I honestly don't want her to hear, you know, the whole gun salute, especially with this country being as crazy as it is now, with all, you know, the gunshots and how scary it is. I don't know how I'm going to be able to talk to her and tell her, hey, you're going to have to hear these gunshots and maybe it's, you know, maybe it's the real deal and how are we going to approach that? And that's my main concern and that's what I'm here for. And you guys can voice that for us.
It is a big safety concern that it is. That's the thing, we have an active shooter. Our schools are open campuses. Exactly. And if you are, in TK, I have a TK, he, you know, the score when he started, that is terrifying. They will not know the difference between an active shooter and a gun salute. And you know what people say? I get people jumping down my throat over this one next door. You see the letters with my name on it. Okay. Think about when you are four or five years old, you're not an adult. You've got to put yourself in that mindset, that it is very different. And I sympathize with you in the homes. I live in Great Park and I lost a lot of money living in Great Park. I understand your house and the value is very important. Believe me, I understand. So that's why we're having these meetings, because we want to hear, we're trying to find a solution to this. But also put yourself in the place of those kids that are four, five, six-year-olds, they're very little and oh, there's gunshots and they're going to be jumping up, you know. It is terrifying.
Yeah, they're going to get a home, stupid.
Okay.
So I'm here for the kids. Okay, thank you.
You have to write a little essay, you need to provide alternatives, you are not.
We are here. We are here to try, listen to alternatives. But you haven't helped us bring alternatives, you're just saying yes to both.
We're saying no to both.
You're saying no to both. I'm just telling you, if we say no to both, then we're going to Arda. You understand that, you understand that.
Okay, we are, you are turning the residents of the Great Park against each other. No, you're not them. No, I'm not mad at that. I am mad about the binary solution that we're giving.
Then talk to the legislature. Talk to everyone, talk to the legislature.
And A is will affect Cadence and B will affect Crystal. And right here, the city...
I'm going to try for myself, just one more thing. I want you to, I want to know if you understand what I'm saying.
I understand.
Okay, so what do you want me to do?
You are giving us a binary option?
Exactly, that's the option that's going to set us. So what do you want me to do?
You, we, we did not present that option to you.
The legislature, the legislature presented it to us. The state legislature and Melissa Fox presented it to us. So I'm not mad at you, I'm just frustrated because I don't know what to do. And that's why we're here tonight, we're here to listen to the community. But when we're listening to the community, your response is say no to both. And I'm telling you, I already know what's going to happen when we say no to both. What's going to happen is we're going to get Arda. So that's what you want.
I asked the question, if the golf course gets approved, what will happen to the money? Will you start building immediately? And the mayor said she will answer that and I still did not get an answer.
Yes, they're going to go phase one, she said yes.
Exactly, so it's going to be built.
Immediately and the whole process, you have to...
So the Arda is not ready. It needs to be cleaned up, there is not enough funding for it. So it will take many years to be built. On the other side, it's going to go on the golf course. So we're actually saying no to Arda, build it immediately here.
So you're saying yes to Arda, what you're saying?
I'm not saying no to both.
Okay, but if they chose the Arda...
Can I, I'm just, can I have a show hands? Does everybody in the room understand the concept that I'm trying to present? That no to both means yes to Arda? Who agrees with me? No to both means yes on Arda? That's the reality. It's not a good reality, it's not a good reality, it's facts.
So you're just kicking the can, what you're, I get what you're saying. You're saying if we vote for Arda, then it's going to be years. You don't know that, you don't know that.
No, we don't, we don't know that.
Yeah, well, you're, you're failing to understand, there is no choice here. There is not. This is the state of California, you have no vote.
Okay, so I, this is very upsetting. I've been through this for five years and we have this, it's so upsetting. I get why you're upset. But I have two more speakers, so let's, and then I'll call on you. So over here, you wanted to speak on the Bill story and then, then of course, then you're next, okay? Bill, this is Bill Salin, he's a senior record, he's a veteran.
For one thing, I can understand those individuals that are not interested in having a veteran cemetery in huge, considered the Great Park. I want you to know that when that base closed, it was a Marine Corps base. Bill, myself, I'm a Marine veteran. Ever since that base closed, we were out there trying to get something there. We felt, the Marines especially, felt that we deserved a section of that base. Not that, no homes, nothing was there at the time. But at that time, we fought like men to have something in there. It wasn't happening for a good period of time. Well, the committee, we went out looking all over Orange County for certain areas or any section that was good, a good site for a veteran cemetery. There's always problems. There's areas that might have been okay, but it seemed like there's always some sort of a problem. But in the meantime, while we were out there looking in Orange County, we were hitting the city council people. And most of the time, when they saw us coming, they would try to find another direction to go. They were not interested in talking to us. And Bill is, Bob, was very adamant about, keep on hitting them. And we saw a section of the base, I'm not gonna call it the Great Park, but up above what we consider the Great Park, we saw some land. It was the only land available, there was nothing else out there. We said, we're taking, even if it's contaminated, we're dead, who's gonna care? We're gonna be, but we took that land just because it was the only thing available at the time. In the meantime, Five Point, city council, they worked out a deal where we had the strawberry fields. Now that's dead. We all would love to have it, and I'm quite sure that they'd like to have it also, to go back down there. It's not gonna happen. I know it's hard for you to understand, but Larry Adrian is adamant about having that art of site. He doesn't care about the veteran cemetery, he doesn't care about me, he doesn't care about Indians. He is more, are you, you're right. He is more interested in getting even with Five Point than anything else here.
So why Five Point is a gold settlement?
If, well, there's one thing too. He, he has, he has this Irvine community news and view. The nice thing about it, kind of nice thing. He has a way of reaching out to so many people that believe every single thing that's in that thing. I argue with people all the time, I'm, I have website, I mean, I have emails, I'm communicating to people. And their mind is so closed that they believe every single word in that Irvine community news and view. He has a way of communicating, and he has this group of people that is gonna do what he can to convince you that the best way to go is Arda site. If you wanna get even with Larry Adrian, I would consider, like I say, there's still gonna be problems, but I would consider helping us veterans get the golf course. Yep. Thank you.
I think he has addressed half of, most of my question. My question was, what makes Larry Adrian, I don't know much about him, but what makes him so powerful? I think he answered some of my.
He's a former mayor.
Sorry?
He's a former mayor.
He sends his newspaper. Okay, he can be a former mayor, but what influence, how is he able to influence so much?
Because we all feel against it, because there's an old, there's an old American expression that you don't argue with people who buy ink by the barrel. He has a fake newspaper, the next time we go to the grocery store, you'll see it outside. People take it, and it's written like news, it's written like fact. He writes that she's a terrible person, he writes that I'm a terrible person, he writes that developers are terrible.
So when we had the strawberry field as an option, we know what are things that he may do, whatever you're saying, right?
Right.
Was, was something else possible from our end, who wanted to have it in the strawberry field, to, to approach it in the same way, or something to counter that? Maybe we didn't do that, maybe he, he completely brainwashed everyone, and we, maybe we were quiet.
Well, wait, let me say, I will tell you, a handful of us were out on the weekends, every weekend, trying to stop that referendum. When he was getting signatures, yeah, thirty days, and he did a great job. He's independently wealthy, his wife is a pediatric doctor, and he's, I mean, they're just wealthy. They live very simply, but they're very wealthy. So he puts all his money into these things because his ego's into it. So we were all at the market, all of us, trying to tell people with our signs, saying, this is not factual. This is a wonderful idea, we've all agreed to it, there's no developer getting some great, you know, super thing going on here. But we didn't have people getting out from the community, helping us. I don't think, I can't even think how many people in Great Park ever even voted and helped us. We tried our best, but I'm not independently wealthy, the city can't spend money doing it. So we did so much, but this city's big, it's sixty-six square miles. And he got this on the ballot, and then they went full boat and just basically lied to people, and it was very difficult to turn that dynamic around. We see this in politics all the time, don't we? I mean, turn on the news, turn on CNN, turn on Fox News. Listen to what people are saying, and it's very difficult. If you don't have the money to debate it and fight it, it's, it's really very difficult.
But the city also don't have money to develop the art of site, right? So if the art of site gonna be selected, and now the city's in scrap, we don't have money.
Well, no, okay, so that's, let's see, this isn't a fact, so the fact of the matter is, when we get into, if we do approve this golf course site, then I wanna start town hall meetings. What we wanna do is get a plan, a schematic plan that the people, the community wants. Like I said, I thought just switching the golf course was the best idea, and they get a commercial site, and then what we do is we go out for an RFQ, we go out to the development community, and we negotiate with them to come in, clean up the land, and we give them a ninety-nine-year lease, and they build it for us. And then that's how we get it done. So it's, it's, there's all kinds of ways to happen without selling it off, but to lease it for ninety-nine years. But it has to be financially beneficial to them to clean it up and come in and build a wonderful site for all of us. And actually, the golf course site, if we do have a clubhouse and other uses, that's what generates the dollars to make the revenues. Because golf courses today really are not successful in Irvine, we already have, what, three or four already? We have Oak Creek, we have Rancho, we also, that, yeah, middle, right, so we have the strawberry fields, is it strawberry fields?
Strawberry farms, I was close, sorry.
So we have quite a few, and they're all in competition, and that's part of the problem. But no, there's a way to get this artist site built.
And not raising taxes.
No, we're not, I don't, I've never raised taxes, you're not gonna see me raising taxes. It's gonna be something that's workable and beneficial and beautiful that you guys would like around your homes. And that's gonna raise the value of your property. So who else have not had a chance to talk? Oh, you're finishing, okay, finish up, and then we'll go around to other states.
Now, the next is, what is the next, what are the next steps, right? Like, I do understand, next, I mean, you say, we have the city council voting either, either.
Right, and she's saying, five, five, we're gonna have the hearing.
Fine, but as a resident, I am a resident in Tavlin Park, and we have so many people from other neighborhoods here. Like, we are being affected for whatever reason. The home value going down, we already discuss all the things, right?
Right.
So that should be a way out of the system, like, to, for the, for the local public. I do understand the referendum for the entire Irvine, but for local public who live near vicinity, to take some, either legal action, or do a petition, or do something to halt this, do you have any ideas?
Okay, so, okay, my idea, that I've been working on since two thousand sixteen to stop what Larry does, is to propose an alternative site, and that's what we're doing. So by approving it on Tuesday, it, from a short-term perspective, it stops the artist site from being designated by the state by the end of September. That's what we're trying to do. And by approving that, then we can get into discussions and have more hearings, because you're very effective, but I'm telling you, he's got people all over this major, our cities, that they're gonna override you, they're gonna overrule what we're doing here. So we have to take it a step at a time. So I would suggest, because if we don't come and support the golf course site on Tuesday, Larry will be pushing with all his people, we've already done twenty-five emails, go on art of site, he's gonna have a huge group of people out supporting him. And by not having our friends here supporting the golf course site is the short-term solution. Then I think that we sit down, we have more community meetings, we could talk about all kinds of opportunities, especially if we could get the strawberry site and, you know, reverse the swap. I would have to have an attorney help us figure that out. But that, that to me is the best choice of all. But I think we need to brainstorm, we just don't have time to come up with these multiple solutions right now. And that's why I wanted to call this meeting, and that's why I wanted to help you understand what we're up against. So, okay, so you, and then, let's go back to you, okay? Up right there, and then we'll go back to you.
I just have a question, I know that people who want the Arda site to be selected, all of Larry's, you know, following, they've asked everybody who's present at the council meeting on the Tuesday.
Right.
Do you think it will make a difference if we voice our opinion, or we, we are present as Great Park neighborhood residents, we are present there to voice our opinion, does it even make a difference?
To oppose the artist site that actually is contiguous to all your homes, I would say yes. I think it's be very helpful for us.
So I think everybody should know that, like, I think if that makes a difference, we should all be there at the council meeting on Tuesday.
It would be real, it would be, yeah, it'd be real educational for you to understand how we operate, to see and hold, hold action. But again, I would appreciate that, if you don't feel comfortable, I understand that as well, but it would be very helpful to just say you do not support the artist site, I would appreciate that. At least gets the ball rolling in the right direction.
And I, I think that's what I wanted to understand, and I hope everybody follows.
Okay, I'm sorry, the gentleman behind you wanted to speak, and then we'll go to, I wish. Oh, no, it's the gentleman in the blue shirt, oh, oh, you passed.
So, hi again. When we first purchased our home, we heard that there's gonna be a cemetery somewhere in the Great Park, and I contacted the city council directly, and I talked to members there, and I asked for street names, I went and I drove. And although I knew it was gonna be the Arda, I was opposing it since day one. And I actually sent emails and communicated to my neighbors and asked them to go vote against the Arda, although it is far away from my home. So for now, to come and say, the Arda is close to the Cadence, but the golf course is okay, because it's away from our homes and schools, turning residents of the Great Park against each other, and that is wrong. We should be standing together against both sides, because they both will deevaluate our home values. That is number one.
But just the reality, and I appreciate your thought, because I understand what you're saying. But the reality is, by you taking that position and encouraging residents to take that position, what you're actually gonna end up having is you're promoting the artist site. That's what's gonna happen, that's exactly what will happen. I know you don't wanna hear that, but that's what's gonna happen.
Just like we're fighting the golf course with a petition, we can fight the Arda with a petition too.
You meant listening, oh, yeah, two nights, yeah, the sixty days, because then it will be designated by the state of California.
I'd love, I'd love to see this guy, the Superman.
You'll see him Tuesday night if you show up.
Yeah, show up everybody, I'm on Tuesday.
Okay, he's popular, I hate to tell you, he's popular. I know, I, I hate to even mention it, but he is, and that's just what's gonna happen, because it's gonna take you a lot longer to get petitions, and I'm not trying to warp your concept, I, I don't mean to say that. This is the short-term solution, okay?
Can I finish my question? I would like to bring to your attention that the location that we have on the map is different than the one that is highlighted in blue. And I don't know if that is intentional, or look at where the Arda used to be. First of all, the builder did not tell us where it's gonna be. We have to call the city in order to get where the location would be, which is the Arda. Now, the homes are selling in cadence, and the value is down, a hundred thousand down, it's moving downwards. The question is that, after this space is built, and you are locked in your homes, just like we are, is the blue gonna move into the gray area, because they're gonna start selling on the other side of the street?
No, because property has lines. The Arda, the golf course site, it's all the city-owned. But when we deed land over to the state, we're not saying, pick whichever one hundred acres you like. We're going to tell them, it's the blue. And just like anyone else, if you buy land and you build your house, and it goes over your lot line, that part of the house, it doesn't belong to you. So when we deed, whichever site is picked to the state of California, they will own that land, and they will have that deed.
When is the date when you will give them the deed?
What's down the road? I mean, once you get the approval, there's all, I mean, months and months. But, but I'm telling you, once we do this, you're going to help Larry run an initiative against, it'll be out on the street, getting signatures, fighting us, and that's the first step, we have to work that. And then once we do that, we have time, right, to try to figure out what to do. It's, it's kind of a up-in-the-air situation, it's difficult to know how this is gonna turn out. But I just don't imagine that you really wanna just give up and have him put the artist site there, that's what's gonna happen. So anyway, there's a couple people over here, I'm sorry, yeah, over in the back, and then, you, do you need a microphone?
I'm gonna say, she's totally waiting for her to get her microphone. I think the thing that some people might be missing right now is if the council votes for the golf course, Larry has a, what, ninety-nine point nine percent promise to start an initiative, which will delay anything from happening until November twenty-twenty, when there's a vote. So if we do say yes, Arda, he gets what he wants, and that will start it sooner. We say, yes, golf course, even though we don't want golf course, he's gonna come out with an initiative, and they cannot do anything once that has started. They do not go against the people.
That's, that's all.
So.
No disrespect to the veteran, but that's, that's what you are.
In order to get a solution, we need time. And time means we need to go against what he wants, so he triggers an initiative and gives us that year and a half till November twenty-twenty for that vote.
So it's not, it's after nine weeks, you know, we're at, I'll work tomorrow and whatnot. So, anyway, it just didn't encourage, I appreciate you all coming, I know this is such a, and I have. Oh, wait, okay, I'm so just, yeah, right back to your head question or statement, and then we, I think we need to close it down.
So my question is on the blue, on the blue area is the proposed golf sign. On the right side, what, what are they going to build, on the right side?
Okay, so that's the Arvo Shenon, it's a, it's a big, like, wide quarter, very large, right? The animal store, so I think you can go there. And then on the other side, they have homes that are proposed.
Okay, so in the future, all those area, will we have the more residents, right, going next to the cemetery as well? But we also set story for all of Great Park neighborhood too. So a little bit about myself, I'm original from China, so I have a lot of us in here. My, my neighbors, they Chinese a lot, and I don't talk about race in here, because we are all the same here, try to come up with the same story, the same idea. However, most of us don't speak out for ourselves, most because we don't speak English, and we don't get a vote. So that's why I think if Tuesday, but the good thing is, I know more than three hundred neighbors in here. So I can get them together, but the thing is, we never talk about the rights of our residents here. So if in the future, you guys can give more information out to all of us, and then we spread out to our neighbors, then we can get more powerful resolution, resolution.
Can I suggest?
One thing, just let me just real quick, so the one thing we did do, remember when you had that proposed by the county to put that homeless shelter on that hundred acres?
Yes, I was there.
You people band together, I was out there.
I was there, I was cracking on like Taiwan, almost Taiwan, I was your person.
And you threw blast loads to the county, and you stood your ground, and we stopped it, we got.
I was the first, I was the one that called back. And then we all, we have cars, we have buses, everything, I was one of the leader in there. So that's why I think.
We look at how we worked, we banned together, and we solved the problem. I just feel like we need to do this now, and it's not the best solution, it's the best interim solution that we can do. And if you could come on Tuesday night, I'd love you to be there, and I understand your concern. Look, I'm not saying that I don't understand it, I'm a real estate agent, I know how people feel about their property values. It's, it's, you can't, in government, it's so difficult to please everybody, it's impossible. But we wanna do everything we can to let you know we care. Anthony and I have worked together for years, trying to find and solve problems. We're not trying to lob bombs on people in harm, that we really wanna help you. But we're up against the big picture here, that we have to let you know what's going on, okay?
And I, I would suggest to you, if this is something your neighbors would be comfortable with, I realize that there's a language barrier. So if you wanted to come to council with your neighbors, they don't know how to speak. But it would be, and I've been in a lot of these meetings, I've been a commissioner and on council for, oh gosh, eight or nine years. Some of the most powerful remarks that Richard and others have brought forward are when you stand at the microphone and you say, my name is so-and-so, and I'm speaking on behalf of these people, and your three hundred neighbors stand up. They don't all have to get up, but, and they don't have to speak. But that's, that's a potential solution if your neighbors have an interest in getting involved.
So it's late, I appreciate everyone being here, I hope that after, and me, Tuesday, if you can, we appreciate it. You certainly have every right to speak your position of mind. I'm not telling you how to, or prescribe how you need to do it, but if you understand these concerns, you understand why we need your help. Okay, so thank you, and I'm so glad you all.